Let me call this meeting to order. Thank you for coming, welcome. May I have a roll call please, Mr. Sarcisi?
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanekin?
Here.
Mr. Moner?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
All right. I'd like to state that I am showing 7:30 PM. And now I would like to ask our council president, Dave Engel, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which I will say a quick prayer.
What do you want to lead us to?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts, our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. Okay. First on our agenda tonight, this is the first meeting of the year. At the first meeting of every year, there are elections in which we choose our council president, vice president, so forth. I'm sorry, I had the other one in front of me. We have minutes from November 13th. Do I have a motion to accept?
I have a request. Josephine and I have just discussed that we hold the November 13 minutes, but that the rest of them proceed.
Okay, we have November 13th, December 4th, and December 11th. Do I have a motion to accept December 4th and December 11th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right.
Can I ask one quick question? Ms. Sarcisi, was there any difference between February, November 13th meeting minutes we had and the ones you just sent? I didn't see any. I believe they were attached again, just for our perusal.
Yeah, no, nothing changed. Excuse me, nothing changed, all of them. I incorrectly identified it as 11:13:15.
Okay.
No, no, nothing has changed.
Thank you.
Back to business. All right, so the first meeting of the year is organizational. Tonight we'll be electing our council president, vice president, we'll be choosing our committees. Different council people serve on different committees. And I will now open the floor for nominations for council president.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Rita Darrell for council president.
I need a second. Motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for council president?
I'd like to nominate Nick Moner for council president.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have two candidates. Are there any other candidates for council president? Hearing none, let's proceed on to vote, starting with Rita Darrell. All those in favor for Rita Darrell as council president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you want us to say aye or nay?
Why don't we have a roll call?
Yeah, a roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Yes.
The question is whether we're voting for Rita? Okay.
I'm sorry. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Moner?
No.
And Ms. Tully?
No.
All right. If that's the majority, I don't think we have to go through the nominations and vote in for the next candidate.
What if there was a tie? It could happen.
You're right. All those in favor of Nick Moner? Roll call please.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Moner?
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Mr. Moner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to nominations for council vice president.
Mayor, I'd like to make motion for council vice president to be appointed to Nick Moner.
I'd like to nominate-
Sir.
Okay, motion and a second. Go ahead, any other further nomination?
I'd like to nominate Sylvia Hanekin for council vice president.
Second.
Okay, are there any other candidates? Hearing none, let's start off with Nick Moner. Roll call please.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Mr. Moner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, the next candidate would be Sylvia Hanekin for vice president. Roll call please.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Moner?
No.
And Ms. Tully?
No.
All right, congratulations Rita. Congratulations Sylvia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now we're going to move on to commission, planning commission. We need a council representative. Are there any nominations or volunteers for a council representative to plan?
I'd like to nominate Jan Tully.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. Dave Engel for planning commission.
Second.
Okay, we have two candidates. In seconds, do we have any other candidates? Hearing none, let's start with Ms. Tully.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
This is for-
Planning.
Planning Jan? No.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Moner?
Yes.
All right, the next candidate is Mr. Engel. May I have a roll call please for planning commission?
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
No.
And Mr. Moner?
No.
All right, the next council representative to a commission would be for Parks and Recs.
I'd like to nominate Jan Tully.
Second.
We have a nomination for Jan Tully in a second. Are there any other nominations for Parks and Recs Commission? Hearing none, let me have a roll call for Jan Tully.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Moner?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, so we have two representatives to our commissions. Congratulations to Mr. Engel and Ms. Tully. Moving on to finance chair.
I'd like to nominate Jan Tully.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for finance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Sylvia Hanekin.
Second.
All right, first, we have Jan Tully. Roll call please.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Mr. Moner?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, next will be for Sylvia Hanekin. Roll call please.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Moner?
No.
And Ms. Tully?
No.
All right, the finance chair will be Sylvia Hanekin. Congratulations Sylvia. Moving on to committee assignments. I believe there was only a couple of changes talked about on committees. Do you want to handle those?
I don't think we had any.
Miss President, now I have to say, Miss President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For finance committee of the whole will be all of council. And our representative will be Sylvia Hanekin as our chairperson. Our safety committee is going to remain Nick Monar. He will be the chair. Dave Engel and Jan Tully. Our streets and highways is Sylvia Hanekin as our chair, and Ms. Tully, and also Nick Monar. And our public works and utilities will remain Dave Engel as our chairman, and Sylvia Hanekin and Nick Monar will still represent the public works utilities. Building and zoning committee will be Jan Tully as our chairman, and Nick Monar and Sylvia Hanekin. Our firemen's dependency board will be Jan Tully. Our jet board of directors will remain the same, Mr. Nick Monar and Rita Darrell. Cemetery board is a three-year term, and I just went off. I've been on the cemetery board for three years, and now Northfield has gone on. And they will be on for three years. And that will be all.
Northfield Village.
Yeah, Northfield Village.
Okay, good job. I believe that ends all the assignments tonight. May you verify that for me, Josephine Walden. All right. But the next section of our meeting is comments by the public. In order to comment, we ask you to sign in. And please come up to the front here. We have a microphone right here by Joe. And state your name and address. And first on the list this evening is John Madeljason.
Good evening, council and mayor. The reason why I'm here today is because John Madeljason comes from 1186 River Run Drive in Lake Forest Estates. Back on September 11th, when we had discussion regarding the creek problems, we had talked about getting the sand tested. And that's what was voted on. Sylvia brought up, and Nick seconded the motion. And then when I asked for a request for it, what we get is an opinion. Okay, I don't think there's a question that we have sand in our retention in our creek beds. Plus, this guy's opinion is probably not more, any more valuable than Nick Feeney's opinion, because it doesn't have, doesn't hold any value whatsoever. This gentleman here actually needs to be recruited by the police department, because this guy puts in writing that he can visually tell the sand is identical. This guy should be testing hair samples at Murrah Blimsey's. His opinion means nothing. Why would we spend $1,200 for an opinion? We needed to take three samples of the sand, one in the south side of the tracks behind Medina Supply, one halfway into the creek bed, and one in between our homes. Why would we spend $1,200 for this? Why are we wasting taxpayers' money? It's been since 2010, we all know there's sand there. I want, I look at the explanation. Why did we spend $1,200 for this gentleman's opinion? Five years, Mayor, it'll be five years on August 10th. And guess where we are now? Nowhere anywhere that we were then. We still have sand, and we have an opinion. I know you guys say now you're going to get tested, but why would we spend $1,200 for this document?
We had a choice on the floor, John. I don't know if you remember, but do we want to spend X dollars or Y? And the council chose X, and X is-
Mayor, that was, there was no one on this thing. I looked at the tape, and I watched it two times. No one said, "Let's sign up for an opinion." Everything was said-
No.
No, it was not said, "We're going to get an opinion." It said, "We're going to test the sand." Watch the tape, Mayor. You know, you know what it is? You constantly, you constantly insult me all the time.
Please stop.
Stop wasting money, Mayor. Stop wasting city money.
I am not wasting city-
What? You paid $1,200 for this piece of paper.
I didn't pay $1,200 for it. I didn't say that that test should be run. It was said right here on this book. And at that time, it was explained to us, John, that we had two options. Nick, can you please help me with what was actually said that evening?
We have, we have a proposal from a geologist for a two-step process. And the first step in the process was a field survey. The field survey was conducted, and the report was generated. And it was clearly identified in the proposal that that was step number one. And then, the if authorized portion of that proposal was testing samples. If the city decided to test the samples and put them under the microscope, that was a separate fee. It's common to break up a proposal like that with itemized unit prices.
Nick, listen, seriously, this guy needs to go. This guy seriously needs to go. He's been dealing with this since 2010.
You're talking about our city employee here.
He doesn't work for the city.
Yes.
He's a contract.
No, he, he works for the city.
Since 2010, Mayor, since 2010-
I'm not going to argue with you.
No, you're not going to argue with me, because you know what it is? For five years, I've been dealing with this. And this is what I get. I get, I get an opinion. Dave's been there, Nick's been out there, Sylvia's been there, Rita's been there, and all can determine that we have a humongous amount of sand.
Who else was there?
You were there, Mayor, but you couldn't walk it because your foot was bad. You sat on my step at my house.
While they walked it and reported back.
That's right. And they said, and Nick and Mike said, hey, we need to put a catch basin to stop all this from coming into the development. Nothing's been said, nothing's been done since then.
John, there have been several reports on this. The EPA gave a report on this subject too. It's not only these people, but we called in the EPA for their assessment. What was their assessment, Nick?
Consistent with that report.
So if the EPA gave us that, and Nick gave us that opinion, why would we pay this gentleman for it? So, so we had Nick's opinion. We had the EPA's opinion-
Which you say is worthless.
Which was, that's right. But the EPA gave an opinion, which is the same as Nick's, right? So why would we pay $1,200 for a third opinion of the same thing?
Because those were the options presented. And council chose the option that was the lesser cost.
Yeah, in the work session, you're going to pay, now you're going to pay $2,500 to get the sand tested, and you burned up half of the $2,500 on this worthless piece of paper.
We are getting the sand tested as a service to you and your association.
It's to the city, because if it's Medina Supply, Mayor, it eats up, it pays for some of the cost. This isn't all benefiting the residents of Lake Forest Estates. Did not, did Medina Supply not get cited in 2003 for the same thing? Did they not?
John, your time's up.
All right, moving on.
Well, before moving on, can I interject the fact that we have a meeting that was set by the president of council, Engel? We talked about, we used to do this every Thursday. We used to host an in-depth work session of an issue, because there usually isn't enough time in a work session, because we've got so much agenda items. And so, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, Mr. Engel, we had set the first Thursday in February specifically only to talk about Lake Forest. And the discussion tonight in the work session was also to talk about, do we have enough information to make an intelligent decision based on the, I think you mentioned three different groups that had basically walked it? Or do we need more? Because the issue isn't, is there sand in the creek? It's where is it coming from? Who has the responsibility? We really can't make a determination of how to resolve it until we know all the answers. Same as when we were on the stormwater committee. We had to sit down and look at all the issues. You can't just simply go put a pipe in and think it'll fix it when it may not. You can't simply put a retention basin in if you don't know. And it may not be all our cost. We've all talked about the fact this may have cost from Twinsburg Township. It may have cost from the supply company over there. We don't know. So we need to make an intelligent decision that does impact the residents of that homeowners' association. But it may not be the answer you want, and it may be the answer you want. It depends on really working on facts. So, and we intentionally did the fifth because we didn't want to shortchange the topic.
Yeah, I, let me just say a couple things here. I did think we wanted to have a scientific determination, and that's what we've agreed to tonight. To try to get a scientific determination of where the sand is originating, and definitively know that. It may affect the solution that we come up with. It probably will. It may affect the financing, as Mrs. Tully said. So, I think that we're all in agreement on the way forward at this point. We, the timing of our meeting in February may have to be modified if we don't get the results from those tests. Because I think that while we have an opportunity, I don't think we want to get into a long discussion if we don't have all the facts. So, I'd like to get them all. We'll see whether we can get the results back quickly.
All right, next on the list is Jerry Sexton. Jerry?
Hello, everybody. My name is Jerry Sexton. I reside at 8179 South Bedford Road. I have some drawings I'd like to pass out, if it'd be possible, to council.
Mr. Deemer, could you hand those to us?
There's three of them there. Just divide them up.
Thanks. Same thing.
I think they are. Okay.
No, there's, there's three clips, so we need to split these.
No, no, don't, don't split those. Just each-
Just look at-
Yes.
We need to share them, I guess.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'll, I'll move on here. As I said before, I reside at 8179 South Bedford Road. I am a Vietnam veteran. I have worked for the Veterans Administration for 32 years in the engineering department. I personally built my home 26 years ago on South Bedford Road. My topographical crest is at 984.0 for my property. The architect, Mr. Bill Doty, has proposed a set grade of 99.4, or 99.4.0. Considering this proposed building is 70-foot high at the ridge, this would mean a total of 80-foot in height from my property elevation. And only 116-foot setback from my property line. In regard to the parking lot setback of 60 feet from my property line, I see a problem with constructing a four-foot deep by 10-foot wide catch basin, mounting of earth, planting of mature trees, and a privacy fence, all within a 60-foot span. I truly believe that such a large building would adversely affect all of the property values on South Bedford Road. Thank you.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes.
Is this the, is this the view from your deck?
That is my next door neighbor. My, my property is to the left of that picture.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Where the, the two-story building is?
Yes.
That's 19 feet?
Right.
Yes. You know, that building's two stories, and we're looking at an 80-foot tall building. Even though the structure is only 70-foot, there is a rise of 10-foot in elevation from my property.
Did, maybe you didn't do this, but did you generate this, this picture that I'm looking at?
No, I didn't. But I, well, I did, in a way. I had an artist draw it up, yes.
Okay, and so it's just, it's to scale as to what?
Pretty much so. The only thing I have to leave out, before I went to the meeting other, or the thing I have to bring in perspective here, before I went to the meeting other night, I thought the rise in elevation was in three feet. Well, when I saw their drawings that they had there, I found out that the rise is 10 feet. So that drawing depicts only a three-foot rise in the, in the grade.
The building is actually higher than-
Oh, yes, seven-foot higher than what you're looking at there.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, just so you know, you are able to go, this has to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes.
Because it would require a variance. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is an open meeting. You can go to it. You can testify as to how you think this will impact the neighborhood. We have a system that we have to go through. People will come to me and say, we are interested in purchasing this property and doing this. From there, it goes to the planning commission. At the planning commission, it was discussed, is this feasible with input from a professional plan? Not just, you know, people that are on the commission. There was no reason for us to say at that time that it should be done, and we couldn't say that until it got a variance. So the planning commission sent it to the Board of Zoning Appeals so, to see if this will work.
Sure.
So you have the option to testify.
Yes, and I will. But, you know, I know everything looks good on paper.
Sure.
But in actuality, this is going to be a real eyesore option.
And it's really good that you're so knowledgeable that you can point something like this out so well. That's a beautiful job you did there. I don't think anybody realizes what it would look like. All you're doing is looking at paper.
Yes.
And you're talking about a facility that-
Will impact us for years.
Well, it'll impact us as far as perhaps the look of it, but it could also be something that we always look for and that's a way to keep kids involved in sports.
Sure, yeah.
So, that was a consideration here, too.
Yes.
John, I think it was true that there was a conceptual approval, is that?
Conceptual.
Yeah. So, it, it's not that there has not been any approval, but there was a conceptual one and I, I planned to attend the BZ. I had not seen this picture, but it's kinda overwhelming.
Yes.
So, it has to go back to planning?
Yes.
Well, no, it goes to the BZA.
Well, if BZA.
And then when they start to get, if they get past the BZA, then it would come back to planning as far as how it's going to look, how it's going to be built. And it has to correspond with our codified ordinances. These are codified ordinances that we didn't do. The problem with this, Jerry, is that years ago, they never ever should've put the zoning in this city the way they did. This problem goes all the way back, maybe you even remember aerosol systems.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do value you.
And all the problem, they had houses right across the street from it.
Yeah.
We have a development on Dessel Ridge where there's huge buildings and trucks that run and idle fifty feet from people's bedroom window.
Yeah.
That's insanity.
Yeah, yeah.
All right? So, this, where this is going, this is zone where it could go.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can't say no until it goes to BZA and BZA will make a ruling.
Okay.
So, if BZA makes a ruling, then that's the end of it, or does the planning then have to approve it? Even if BZA?
Planning, I believe, has already approved it.
No, just conceptually, in other words, would this be something that is acceptable according to the codifieds?
Yes.
And we say conceptually, yes. But it gotta go to the BZA.
Yeah. When I talked to Ambassador a few days ago, they assured me it was a done deal. But the building's going in there no matter what.
Well, Mike, there's a possibility that if it gets turned down at the Zoning Board of Appeals, it goes back to Doty and Miller and they would have to rework the building to meet the codifies, which would mean the thirty-five-foot height, mean that the building setback requirements would have to be met, all of its money. And I think that they're going maybe the cheaper route to begin with. But, you know, if they still need the height of the building, maybe they go in and they dig a basement and then the height of the building isn't as high, but the building still stays. If that corner of the building is encroaching in a setback, maybe he doesn't, maybe the building doesn't come like this. Maybe they cut it back. I mean, there's, there's options that are available to still make it work and meet the codified ordinances. But, the first step is, is it's gonna be approved or is it gonna be disapproved? Now, the, the burden is on the applicant and he has to claim and show a hardship in order to receive these variances. The building department, as you know, we turned this down. The reason it's at the Zoning Board of Appeals is because it doesn't meet the ordinances and we have to turn it down and they're appealing my decision. So, that's what's happening right now. How can they claim a hardship when they don't own the property yet? Uh, sure. They can as long as they have a letter from the property owners. So, there's, there's, as long as they have approval from the property owners and letters that, that are granted in that way, then they can apply for various. What letters are you talking about? From the property owners. Who's the property owner? Uh, the city is one of them.
I thought it was.
Yeah, there's more than one.
There's more than one.
Well, I thought that, that we were trustees for this property.
Correct. Right.
Let's, you know, I understand that, what the mayor is referring to in terms of the inappropriate combinations of zoning, which is what you were referring to earlier. We have a limited industrial right behind homes that could be complicating the situation. I, I think that we ought to be, in terms of the Planning Commission, I think they have the authority to really look at not just the codifies, but the general impact on the welfare of the community and of the, of property owners in the area. So, you know, I, I don't think that it's automatically a done deal and certainly what Mr. Ladd is saying is correct. They do have to, they would have to meet the codifies, period, and they, they do not at this point. Now, whether it's a hardship, uh, I do not understand that, that kind of reasoning in this situation, but that's what they're gonna present to the BZA, correct? I think this is something where if we had brought in the property owners and this, we've had a couple of issues. One was over on Valley View here when we had the rezoning that was requested and was originally not approved for Valley View where that nursing home was going to go eventually. And with Faith Fellowship on the, over in that R-one zoning, where we had the residents become involved in it at a later stage. It would be better if we'd had them at a very early stage here. Because this kind of input wasn't available to the Planning Commission that I saw. They didn't discuss it. And if you look at it visually, you think, "Oh, my God."
Yeah, people tend to.
You want that in your backyard.
Yeah, people don't tend to look at the elevations unless they're really, you know, with the engineering section.
Well, the elevations that we were presented were drawings.
Yes.
There were no elevations that would give you perspective to a tree.
Not from the homeowner's perspective, right.
Now, uh, just so you're aware, we have to follow the process, Jerry.
Okay.
Because the city lost a lawsuit where it was not for this property, but for another property where we wouldn't have, allow something to happen. They took the city to court. How long ago was that, Joe?
I don't remember it was a lawsuit, Mayor.
Costco.
Costco?
Costco. Yeah, our two zoning.
That's a mayfield heights, we didn't handle that.
No, our, our two zoning.
Well, the one over there on South Bedford.
South Bedford.
But that was a different issue.
That we settled that case.
From our, our two zoning.
We didn't lose it, we settled it, though.
You settled it. So, in other words, a lawsuit could've happened, is what I'm saying. So, we have to follow procedures because we didn't back then and this resulted in almost being a lawsuit. So, we're going through the steps and you're more than welcome to go to that meeting and testify.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll be there.
Yes, absolutely. Were you at that meeting the other night for, where they were trying to?
Yes, I, I spoke with the architect and that's, that's, when I looked at his drawings and I saw nine-nine-four and, you know, I'm an eight-eight-four, a ten-foot rise in elevation right away. You know, I think they were kinda shocked that it would affect us so much.
Yeah, they might've been.
You know, I, I'm not only gonna see this building from my backyard, I can see it from standing on South Bedford Road. And people are gonna be asking me, "What is that huge building behind your house?" You know, it's, it's, and I go to sell my property.
It's not passed yet, Jerry. I think the concern would be if it were to pass. But one of the reasons I did not go to that meeting is I don't wanna have any influence on the decision by the BZA.
I understand.
I have to stay away so they don't say, "Well, the mayor wants this or..." No. The BZA has a tough job for the zoning appeals.
Yes, yes.
Because sometimes they have very, very tough decisions to make and this is one of those, you know? They have to weigh the facts and they're pretty good. Most of the BZA members have been there for quite some time. It's not like somebody new being on there. They've been doing this most, all of them, I think, just about all of them, Mike, no?
Yeah.
For years.
Okay.
So, you go there, you get sworn in, you testify and your testimony is weighed along with their testimony.
The process, okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Sir, sir, do you need these back for, um, for BZA?
Uh, yes, I do.
So, you don't have to spend any more money?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was really a good job.
Thank you.
Can we retain one of them?
Yes.
Can we retain?
We can get it up to the BZA for the record.
Well, then, we, can we give it to Jipson? We could retain one for the record.
Yeah, sure.
We got two now.
Now, we have two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why don't we give one back to them?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. Hand them over.
All right, next, we have Bev Sexton. Bev?
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Beverly Sexton. We built our home twenty-six years ago on South Bedford Road. My address is eighty-one seventy-nine South Bedford Road. With such a large influx of people at any given time, we're greatly concerned with security and safety to us and our property. Because we have a building at the east end of our property, which is sixty feet away from the proposed soccer facility parking lot, this would make us very uneasy and we may need to install an extra security system for monitoring and protection. Additionally, the intrusion of noise, traffic, and lights this proposed building will present is another major concern for us. The size and purpose of the soccer complex is totally inappropriate for the parcel and location. The proposed property and building abuts to our residential property and would dramatically affect the sightline from our home and property. Not only our property values, but those of the surrounding homes would be negatively impacted considering the size, height, and elevation of this proposed structure. The green space in Macedonia is slowly but surely slipping away. There used to be a nice balance of nature, residences, and businesses. This is quickly becoming a thing of the past. We have to ask, what are the benefits to the citizens of Macedonia to put this building in? What is the tax advantage for the city to have a nonprofit company build on this parcel? Because the city of Macedonia is the trustee for this parcel of land, is there a conflict of interest? The majority of buildings in Macedonia are thirty-five feet and below, which makes the requested height variance excessive and inappropriate, given the proximity to our residential property. The Planning Commission ruled on this in a very quick matter, manner. It, uh, it was quite disturbing to us to find that out as we viewed the video from that planning meeting. It, it, uh, it was very disrespectful, I believe, to us. We did not know about it until three weeks ago. It was speculative for months and then all of a sudden we're notified, you know, a week and a half before this Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, which had to be postponed because the parcel number was wrong. The dedication and interests of the citizens of Macedonia should be and continue to be the top priority for the elected and appointed officials within the city of Macedonia. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bev. I'm sorry if that offended you, but we, as far as that property, something else could go there and at one time they wanted to put a trucking depot there. And that didn't fly at all because we had a lot of problems in another part of town with the trucking going right next to residential. So, that didn't even get off the drawing board. So, I don't think anything was done with the intent to hurt you or your property values. It was just that, that property, those people have the right to sell it. The city, when it gets sold, will get paid back taxes. We aren't gonna make a profit.
Right, I understand.
All right? So, something else could go there.
Right.
Because the property is for sale. Just so you realize, if this doesn't go, something might.
When we purchased the property, we knew that there always could be something built there. We knew that the, that the zoning was, was LI. We knew that the, the requirement was thirty-five feet and the setback was a hundred-and-fifty feet. That we could've lived with. Not this enormous airplane hangar that's going to be behind the property.
And I understand where you're coming from. It's not, I don't know if I would want something like that.
Right.
If it was behind me. But, the thing is, we have to go through the process, as I tried to explain before, so the city doesn't leave itself liable.
Right.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, next is Marty Skarupa.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marty Skarupa and I, with my husband, live at eight-one-nine-nine South Bedford Road. And I'm here to talk about the traffic situation that if the soccer facility does become a reality, it will be compounded. Exponential growth in traffic. But before I go into that, I want to say that, as Bev was saying, when each and every one of us built those homes which butted up to the proposed site, we all were aware that there was a train back there. It didn't matter. Our lots were very deep. We all were aware also that there was a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback and we were all aware, a hundred-and-fifty feet versus what we would now have, which I believe is sixty feet at the parking lot point. We were all aware that if a building were to go up there, it would only be thirty-five feet at the most. Not eighty feet. So, this is how we look at it. We built our homes. We invested in our homes for the past, well, I built my home in nineteen-seventy-eight. Quite a few years, quite a few years. With the knowledge that we would have a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback and no building back there more than thirty-five feet. We could live with that. But now the city wants to change the rules in the middle of the game after we have invested in our property. So, but that's our problem, as we like to say sometimes, the people on, that were going to butt up against this property. But there are other issues that will affect other people. So, one of our neighbors, one of my neighbors who lives across the street on the other side, she and I wanted to get a, a point of view from the rest of the neighborhood. When we say rest of the neighborhood, we mean Maple Court, Blue Jay, Swallow, Red, Valley View. It's not just the people butting up. We collected over one-hundred-thirty signatures. Not one individual refused to sign. Almost every individual said, "Stop right there" when we would try to tell them the specific issues. "I've heard enough," they would say. "Just give me that petition, I wanna sign it." So, this is the problem. All of us, not just the people who are butting up to, to the proposed facility, are going to be affected by the traffic. We have the high school traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. Not a problem for any of us. Not one person complained about that. Football season, basketball, of course, you know, more extra traffic. We don't care because those are our children, our young people attending an excellent high school. It's okay. And in any case, we all purchased our homes knowing that high school was there. But in the last year, we have a new problem. An inoperable traffic light at the end of South Bedford and Highland. Inoperable from the hours of four to six approximately, which just happens to be rush hour. Almost each and every person who signed this petition said that they had experienced at least a ten-minute wait at one time or another, waiting on South Bedford behind countless cars to turn left or right on Highland. Almost every single individual who signed this said, "And I have witnessed near accidents. I know that I myself could've been one of those. As I watched the traffic, I have said to myself, 'Oh, I think there's an opening. Let's go for it, Joe.'" Yep, and, and the tires screech. And we go, "Oh, my God." I'm Catholic, so, "My God, you know, we made it." It's happened to me and it's happened to almost every single person. They have witnessed this. All right, well, we have been told that that will never change. That will never be an operable traffic light by a very good, shall I say, person who knows what he's talking about in the city. Now, in addition to this, y'all know about the facility that's going on the north end of South Bedford, our memory care, lots more traffic. Villas, duplex villas with two-car garages for each one adding to the traffic. And oh, the other night, we found out that it is proposed that a four-story hotel be up, be built up there also next to the memory care center. All right, now, let's just add to this cocktail the three-hundred, almost three-hundred cars that this facility is going to have at there, behind our home. Almost three-hundred cars to accommodate the five-hundred-seat stadium. Almost three-hundred more cars that will, at any given time, I mean, sometimes it might be last, might be only two-hundred, as the gentleman at the other meeting said. Well, not always three-hundred, excuse me, not always three-hundred. I said, "Well, how about, let's say, two-hundred on any given day, two-hundred extra cars?" He said, "Yeah, that's good, that's on tape if y'all wanna see it." Coming from his mouth, yes. From four o'clock in the afternoon to midnight. Isn't that lovely? Four to midnight, Monday through Friday and on weekends, all day. That's even lovelier. Now.
The first and the second time of up, I just wanna let you guys know.
Okay.
I've been trying to keep time.
All right, I just, I just have maybe thirty seconds more. And then, uh, then also, you know, that facility is going to be built at the end of just a two-lane road. Uh, I think it's called High Point Boulevard. I would like to know how they're gonna put an operable traffic light at that end when they can't put an operable traffic light at our end at the end of South Bedford. Again, from a very reliable source, we were told, quote-unquote, "It ain't gonna happen." I would also like to know how fire and ambulance people are going to go down this road, if the need be, when there are eighteen-wheelers going up and down that road twenty-four hours a day. I'd also like to know, in case of a real emergency, how that building would be evacuated when there's only one exit with an inoperable light at the end. I would really like that explained. Okay, so, very quickly in twenty seconds, one of the individuals who signed this petition said to me and my neighbor, "You know, I've always supported the mayor, but you know, give me that petition." What was he thinking? So, I proposed to you, since I did not have an answer, not only what was your honor thinking, but what was the Planning Commission thinking when they allowed it to get this far? So, I am hoping. So I am hoping, I am hoping and praying that all y'all here will come up with something to put a stop to this madness. Thank you.
Next is Brad Summers.
Before we move on, can you address the light? Because I have seen that light work.
Not between the two of them.
I'm addressing the, please, representative.
Okay. The big issue we have with that light is, it was put into function, it was a loaner from Signal Service, because at the time, we could not afford to buy a traffic light. It was put into function to alleviate school traffic when it's letting out. To answer the question, and I can only speculate, maybe Mike or Nick could help with this, about if they put a light at the traffic on, at the end of the street where this is going, I would assume the developer would pay for that and not the city of Macedonia. That's typically how we would do that in any development where it would increase traffic. It becomes a developer's problem to pay for the light. The last quote we got, Jim, on that traffic light, and if John was here, he would know, Sonia, you might even know, I wanna say it was like fifteen grand or something like that.
Hundred and sixty thousand.
One-hundred-and-sixty thousand, according to the developer.
Planning commissions at one-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
That's for the South Bedford and Highland Road?
Just the one.
Okay. So for us to update the light at South Bedford, it's a large project and it's a lot of money. So, and the other, if we have it running longer than that period of time, it backs up Highland Road. I mean, it's, we're trying to alleviate everybody's problems, but for every complaint we get from somebody on South Bedford, we get just as many from people on Highland Road, sitting there for a half hour, waiting to get home after work, so.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Brad Summers, I'm at eighty-one-eight-nine South Bedford. My wife and I have lived on South Bedford Road for twenty-three years, and I realize now this is my second council meeting. I know there's at least one person here that thinks that's a bad thing, but there's a reason for that I don't come to these meetings. I can do without the stress. I choose to believe that despite political affiliation and differences of opinion, that the city council will make good decisions. I also choose to believe that when it comes to the big decisions, my city will protect me. And I appreciate your willingness to serve. Losing my voice. On Tuesday, there was a community meeting with the organization that wants to put the soccer facility in my backyard. It's been brought to our attention that the city council has not yet approved the sale of this land, of which they are the trustee. I'm here to make sure that when that decision comes before you, that you are aware of the impact of your decision. I believe that you're charged with protecting the greater good of the city without severely impacting any portion of it. If this is allowed to move forward, the South Bedford Road residents stand to lose a minimum of twenty percent of our home value. Even five percent would be a severe impact. Twenty percent is intolerable to us. And, you know, I'm sure that you, seeing that picture, you can believe that those numbers are realistic. And I'm sure that the ambassadors is a fine organization, but I really don't choose to donate forty thousand dollars to them. Don't call me crazy. Another thing is, is we also have water problems. The, our, those properties are very wet, and we, some of us need two sump pumps. In the springtime, mine runs really frequently. Once everything greens up, it gets much better because they're soaking up a lot of the water. But imagine when hundreds of trees get cut down. Now, I know they factor that in when they're, when they're planning for retention basins and things like that, but, but no matter how many retention ponds and storm drains they put on, they can't guarantee that we will not be impacted by the disruption of the natural water flow. Those same trees that they wanna cut down, protect us from train noise. You can't plant a few trees on top of some mounded soil to kind of visual, and put a fence up and expect to accomplish the same thing. I think that South Bedford Road residents have borne more than our share of the pain caused by the growth of the city. It's nearly impossible to turn left onto Highland Road when the traffic light is off during rush hour, or to turn onto South Bedford from Highland. It's about to become worse when the massive complex at the end of their street opens. Plus, the, imagine the impact when the ramp is relocated to Freeway Drive and figure, people figure out the fastest way to get on two-seventy more, one north, is not to go south on Route Eight. On a similar note, I dread the thought of some young inexperienced driver crashing while desperately trying to dart out into a small gap in traffic when leaving the high school. While, you know, while that light is not functioning. I think that light needs to be active at any cost to the city. Even if it means a coordinated light needs installed on top of the railroad bridge so that people don't come up over the bridge and, you know, rear-end somebody. And I, and I also think that that's a little bit of an overstated problem, because traffic backs up way beyond that bridge, all the way through the light at Valley View, so cars are already stopped. No one's flying up there at thirty-five mile an hour, and surprise, there's somebody stopped on the other side of the bridge. So there is an upcoming zoning board meeting that we're aware of, and we intend that, you know, where this organization tries to convince the board that the building that is twice as tall as what is currently permitted be built closer to our homes than what is permitted. You know, while it is possible the zoning board will rule in our favor, I would prefer you render that meeting moot and agree that this complex should be built somewhere more suitable. Thank you.
All right, next is Carol Kucharsky.
Good evening. My name is Carol Kucharsky. I live at eighty-one-twenty-six South Bedford Road, and that's on the west side of South Bedford Road. I'm retired a little over two years. I like going out into my yard and looking across the street and seeing my neighbors' homes and their trees behind. I don't wanna look at a steel corrugated building rising up above their homes. Back in the seventies, my husband was on city council under Stuart Files, and he had to resign early because he traveled. But at that time, he talked a lot about planned growth in Macedonia, and I don't really see planned growth happening now. It scares me when I see for-sale signs on every little piece of property in the city. Across from the memory care unit, there was a sign. Down on Freeway Drive by the railroad, or by the overpass, there's a sign for sale. I fear that we're moving too far, too fast. I saw the planning commission meeting when they presented, Parallel Partners presented, and everyone is aware of the traffic problem in Highland Road. I believe we need to fix a problem before we complicate a problem. So I'm asking you to please consider that we do this in a slow fashion and not be of haste to go and build some more. Thank you.
All right. Joe Skarupa.
Good evening. My name is Joe Skarupa. I live on eighty-one-ninety-nine South Bedford Road. I've been there since nineteen-seventy-eight. And I'm also gonna address some issues regarding the soccer facility. I was gonna change my presentation a little bit, based on what I've heard here on some of the comments, based on my previous neighbors. But I'm gonna stick to my script, and if I have time and don't get dinged, then I'll add a few more.
One and a half minutes to go.
How many?
Four and a half to go.
Keep me honest. I was going to read a letter from our neighbor who is now traveling out of town, and he has put together a very succinct letter, five pages, but I know I can't do that in five minutes. So I've cut, pasted it and highlighted, so I hope it still has some continuity. Please open, I'm open for questions and further discussions. This will be presented at the BZA in its full entirety, with all the passion and emotion that we showed the other night at the community meeting. It's just not words. There's a lot of heart and soul regarding all of the comments you've heard tonight. It's not a piece of paper with a drawing. It's our property, our values, our equity in our homes. Would you wanna give up fifty thousand dollars? I have any answers? Fifty, fifty? All right, we don't either. So the planning commission acted in haste in doing this in twenty-eight minutes to approve it to go forward in conceptual. It was changed. The mayor was, had foresight to get rid of a trucking firm that might be in there because it was too noisy. Mister Mayor, this would be ten times as bad as a trucking firm at thirty-five feet and a hundred-and-fifty feet setback. This whole facility will be injurious to our premises, all of our premises, and also not in the public interest. Let me define what Webster says by injurious. Inflicting or tending to inflict injury. Detrimental, adverse, damaging, detrimental. All of these adjectives describe what'll happen to our property. How about public interest? You know what Webster says in public interest? Anything, anything at all that affects the rights, the health, or finances of the public at large. Well, it's gonna affect our finances big time. So if you ever wanna buy a house, ours will probably be for sale at about fifty percent value. So if you ever watch HGTV, somebody walks in the house, front yard, say, "Oh, this is a beautiful, beautiful frontage." They walk into the backyard and said, "What the heck is that building back there? What the heck is that interstate? We don't want that." I wanna be able to say, sell it so I can retire back to South Carolina. Anyway, one of the issues that wasn't addressed at the planning meeting at the building commission is zoning. Zoning is, according to the state of Ohio statutes, is defined as a planning tool of local government. Planning is the key verbal key word here, keep that in mind, to manage the future development of a community and, above all, protect neighbors. Excuse my grammar, this ain't protecting neighbors, maybe. Macedonia L-one zoning restricts recreational use to private recreational facilities. In contrast, consider the Macedonia G-one zoning only states recreational facilities. L-one that was approved, or L-one that's being in the zone, and phase one of this building is within the zoning. It's within the definition of private. When they go to phase two, that takes it out of private. It's public. They're gonna rent it, they're gonna sell time and services. It's not L-one, it's not private any longer. It's public. Look under the zoning codes. It becomes a public facility. The planning commission did not even address that. They skirted that whole issue. Never even came up. The foresight wasn't there to look at it. What we know about ambassadors outlined for phase one is within the zoning spirit of what the residents would expect and accept. The word private and limited to the bona fide membership, not anyone or everyone, as with a public recreational facility. Their phase one will be only to their members. Phase two will be open up to anybody within the state and out of the state of Ohio and renting it that is not private. They're modeling their whole facility after one in Michigan called the Ultimate Soccer Facility. You can look up their website, but if they're gonna model it after this on the size and structure, guess what they're gonna model it after the operation? Each day of the week, the last game begins at nine-thirty, and we close at midnight. And residential area and Pontiac, houses are within two miles of this building. Watch, listen to this. This could happen, and I'm gonna play it on the table. Visit the Upper Ninety Pub, that we have a selection of twenty beers, wine, and a full bar, perfect to watch a game. Are they gonna model it after that facility as well? Consider that. They rent it out for profit. This will be a nonprofit, but they're gonna rent it. It's not a private facility. We believe that this proposed facility unjustifiably will impact a large second section of our community forever, is the key word. You can't go back. They go bankrupt, they can't afford this place, what are we gonna have? An albatross of eighty feet staring at us in our backyard, having barbecues, having picnics. Do you want that? Think about it. You go home, look at your backyard and visualize that eighty-foot building. We don't want you to go ahead with it. We had hoped the planning commission would have more foresight and had impact from the residents, which they did not even consider. It was all a drawing from an architect. How about what it's gonna look like? How about how far back the homes are? Some of us are up to the hundred-foot line, as one of the other neighbors said, "So we have a barbecue sixty feet away." You were complaining about this place on Thistle? Well, don't let this happen here. If you say, you let that go through on Thistle, whatever the street that was, because of the trucks, whoever, whatever administration let that go through, don't repeat that mistake. Don't put it sixty feet from our property. You keep saying that's a big issue. It is. But don't repeat the same mistake. Learn from the mistakes, please. Everything you heard from me and everyone else, the summary is, this will be injurious to our premises, and it will be detrimental impact to our community. So whatever, whoever the council can do, and you've heard our grievances and our issues, whatever you can do to stop this from happening, we greatly appreciate meeting your responsibility to protect our neighborhoods.
How'd they do?
You didn't hear any of them?
I did?
As long as they heard it.
That microphone's too loud, better, better cut it down. Sorry, everybody has spoken about this, and I appreciate everything that was said, but you have to understand, as your mayor, I don't go out and solicit these people. They come to the city. When somebody comes to the city, we try and encourage them to be here for a reason. And the reason is that we wanna see our businesses prosper. When our businesses prosper, you do not have to pay real estate tax. The, tonight on the agenda is a piece of legislation that will renew our real estate tax. The total operating tax from real estate that the city gets is seven-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars. The total tax that we get from city income tax from businesses is in excess of eight million. So the city can't live on seven-hundred-thousand dollars. That's all we get from real estate for operators. So we need city income tax. So city income tax keeps your taxes down, which this actually Macedonia's forlosts taxes in the county. So there is something here where, when a business comes to town, it's not like we're looking to hurt you. I don't think anybody realized the impact of this. I think we were thinking more about the people who think soccer is, the world is soccer. You know, how many soccer moms and dads contacted the mayor and says, "Boy, we're so glad there's gonna be a soccer field here." You're saying no, but they did.
As long as it wasn't in their backyard.
Exactly.
Yeah, but they said that they were gonna rent it out to adults. It wasn't, kids, there's gonna be a primary use of it.
Right.
But adults...
They're gonna rent it out to adults, just?
Yes, adults would be there too, but again, it's a recreational facility. Right now, we're negotiating with the school for the gymnasiums to be used as recreational facilities for our adults, because they're asking for that. So this wasn't done with the intent to purposely harm you. This was done with the intent of, somebody wants to sell their land, somebody wants to buy the land, you can't stop that, all right? But you can't control it with your codified ordinances. We have a professional planner. The planning commission usually only verifies and goes along what is recommended by our professional planner. If you go back and look at that tape, the professional planner says, "I don't see a problem with this." Yes, Joe?
He doesn't see a problem because he didn't talk to us, and you didn't talk to us. The planning commission never considered us in the process. And I hear process, I hear procedures. That process and procedure has got to be changed for the general public when you do something like this. You never talked to us.
But you were notified when something was going to happen to make it for sure. You were notified by law. We have to notify.
I heard from the planning building commission, it was a courtesy that we got invited to the BZA. That, to me, is not legal. In any case, I was a soccer coach, the very first traveling soccer coach between Odonia and Twensburg. I'm a soccer fan. I'm a soccer fan. My son loves it. Kids I, I coached have grown up and, and really been successful, played football, and it really done well. It doesn't belong here. It doesn't belong here. The planning commission did not consider us in the equation whatsoever. Did you invite us to the meeting? Did you consider how it would look like what we're showing you? Today's technology is three D, not an architectural drawing.
And I, I commend you on your presentation, all right? It's very, very eye-opening, all right? Because none of us realize that.
That's the point.
But we are not professionals. The mayor is not a professional planner. He has to go by what recommendations are made, just like the rest of the people on the planning commission, all right? I don't know what a building is gonna look like when it's done, other than by the drawings we see. And we try and make those, those buildings look as good as we can. In Macedonia, the planning commission has made our buildings shine. We have buildings that are beautiful in Macedonia. People say it's a beautiful city. So this is not a done deal. It wasn't done with the intention of hurting you, and I'm sorry if it was interpreted that way, I apologize, but it wasn't done with the intent, well, what can I bring here that'll really mess things up? It wasn't done for that. I think we've had enough discussion.
I have a letter, I'm sorry, could you just give me one minute?
Well, we have to move on because we have a big schedule.
It's just two lines, I was given this letter and I was asked to read it and I forgot.
Sure.
It's from Pan Am Tractor and Frame Incorporated, which is one of the businesses back there in the same area. And he, in his last paragraph, he says, though a new business will surely increase the city's tax base, I feel that the measure will hurt all the homeowners throughout the area, and the increased traffic on Highland Point will make it difficult for all business in this area. And he actually spoke to us personally of the eighteen-wheel, wheel trucks that are up and down that road twenty-four hours a day.
One of the people sitting on the planning commission is president of a company on that road, and he's the person that said, there's no way you guys are ever gonna go in there unless you do something to help the traffic. And that's where the talk about, came about a traffic light. And you know what? We're not gonna pay for it. If you're gonna be there, you're gonna pay for it. So that was brought up in the meeting because one of the people on the planning commission has a business there. So that was a very much a point. Now, let's move on.
I'd like to just make one comment here before we move on. Maybe this means, after I've heard this, and I certainly appreciate everybody coming tonight to talk about this, I do have a concern that we need to get input at an earlier point when we have an impact on the neighborhood like this. And maybe we need to change our codifies in some way to involve the residents that are abutting on these properties prior to getting into any formal consideration, bringing them in for a public discussion or even a public hearing. But I, from what I can see here, there have been a lot of things that are kind of eye-opening in what has been said tonight, and I think we should've had our eyes open before we got this far. And we can't get this situation resolved easily without getting not only input from the quote-unquote professionals, but we need to get input from the people impacted. And, and that's the intent of the, of planning and zoning, I believe. So if we're not doing that and we are not having, we don't have a process to do that, we need to change the process so that it does do that. So that's, that's my comment, and I do, I do plan to be at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, because I wanna hear what they have to say also.
You know, the good news is that this isn't gonna be another where you have eighteen-wheelers right behind the house, because you were given a chance to come to a public meeting, express your feelings, you're gonna be given a chance to actually testify at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. So we are taking some steps. I'm very glad that you brought this to light the way you did, because I had no idea that this was gonna be like that. So I'm really sorry about that, Joe.
Mayor, just sort of, this is very, very preliminary in the stages. There are no final construction drawings. The contracts that we've been working on between the parties have not even been finalized or signed. So the lawyers are still bickering over the terms of the sale. This is all preliminary. If it's defeated, it saves the property owner the cost of going through construction drawings. So we are obligated by law to give the notices to the adjoining property owners before the BZA makes a decision. That's why everyone was notified. So it is very preliminary. This is the preliminary stage. The property owner will not lose that much money when he's denied, so it's an easier process to go through. Once he gets approval, if he were to get approval, then they go and spend the money, then they finalize the contract, then council's gotta approve that contract. I mean, we're way early, so.
There has been, there is a, just to clarify, Joe, the actual contracts would have to be approved by the city?
Yes.
Okay. Well.
I think about nine years ago, if many of you recall, there was a proposal for a professional soccer stadium in Macedonia. And I remember reading the paper and saying, you know, what in the heck are they thinking, putting this thing in the middle of our ten-square-mile town? And when people ask me why I sit up here, that was what did it. My wife said, get off your rear end and get up there and do something, and that's why I'm here today. But I'm listening to you guys and I'm thinking about when my family first moved here and we had Burger King and a grocery store. And it was the best kept secret in Summit County, man. We loved here. I came from Garfield Heights to a town that actually had a yard to run in. And I'm looking at the development of the town and where we're heading, and I think it almost lends its hand, and Mr. Scrub and I talked about this prior to the meeting, maybe it's time for a moratorium. I mean, maybe it's time we, we pump the brakes a little bit to say, we need to slow this, this growth down. Tax dollars are great, that's something we always wanna have, but quality of life's more important than anything. So maybe it's time this council starts to talk about pumping the brakes and, and, and put a moratorium on new buildings and, and start to slow things down so that, that quality of life is improved for everybody here.
Yeah, I think we need to do something here because it's clear this started.
Just a word of caution, though, as you know, Nick, there are lots of people who own properties here, maybe some of their friends who own properties here, and then you start putting a moratorium. Constitutionally, we have an issue because how can you say to someone, you let them build on their property, you can't build on your property? Our codes are our codes, we try and control the, the growth so as not to have such an imposition on any other neighborhoods, but to take away someone's constitutional right to use their land is gonna be a problem. And there are other ways to try and do it, and I think your idea is a good one to look into it. It's just not gonna stop everything.
Well, I, I guess what I'm getting at is finding a way to slow.
Yeah.
The growth, because it's, we, we've never been able to accommodate the growth. I mean, our police department's never caught up to it. Our fire department, I mean, we've had a great rating and I think they've done a good job of it, but financially, we're not keeping up with these things with police and fire and service, obviously, so.
We need to look at the ordinances here.
First, we could reinstitute, long ago, I don't know how many years ago that was, we had a planning board, and we did a whole city overview of where we wanted to see the city headed, and there was a whole committee that did nothing but look at the city, look at the zoning, and look where it's headed. Personally, I wanted to buy Lake Forest when it first came up for sale. Girl Scouts called me and said, properties for sale. Called the mayor at that time, we didn't have the money. Then you gotta think of, once you buy it, what do you do with it? How do you maintain it? It was ongoing. This situation, I've already talked to the mayor, said, could we buy it? Don't have the money. Then again, what do you do? If you buy it and you make it a city park, who maintains it? We've already got parks that Jim and I talk about all the time, that we haven't been able to maintain to the upkeep that we'd like it to be. But I think maybe it's time, Mayor, you run that committee. It's time to resurrect that committee, it would be in conjunction with your thought of slowing it down, do an entire city planning review again, and have you as our representative.
I'd be happy to.
We, let me make an announcement, we'll follow it up with notification, that I'd like to reinstitute the Future Growth Committee. The Future Growth Committee wrote our Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Our Comprehensive Land Use Plan is actually online, Josephine?
I don't know.
It used to be, it might be, we can check for you. But the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it, it was a fascinating process. It's a tough committee to be on, because you have to be concerned with everything from residents to businesses. So this committee was formulated with residents and business people. We worked for two and a half years trying to come up with a plan. We finally came up with a plan and presented it to council and it was accepted. I say "we" because I was the chairman and I wrote the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And two and a half years of going to Stowe, going to Hudson, going all over to see what we wanted Macedonia to be. Part of the things that were in that Comprehensive Land Use Plan that were the utmost importance was the infrastructure. And all of the infrastructure will have been addressed by the time I'm out of office, because that to me never left my mind. We can't have a railroad bridge on eighty-two if Macedonia's ever gonna be anything. We can't have people being killed at the railroad crossing on Highland. It's all happening, and I'm really excited about it. And I think it's a good experience to be involved in something like that, but we need not only residents, we need residents, I need people that come from my staff that can help and give input as to what's possible and what's not possible. We need representatives from, from businesses. We need not only men, but women. This is not a sexist thing, this is all input. So I am announcing right now, that's a good idea. Let's bring it back and start to do our control with the Future Growth Committee. Now, we're gonna move on and give Kathy a chance to talk finally.
Thank you very much. Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Kathy Loyah and I live at nine-one-eight-six North Bedford Road, and I would like to approach council and appeal to the city for additional stormwater improvements on North Bedford Road. It was very encouraging and promising to see work this past spring at the south side of North Bedford Road, but I would like to see this sort of comprehensive work extended northward, more towards Ledge Road. While the city's stormwater improvements downstream have helped our specific issues, we still have issues. This, this coming June in 2015, we will have been in our home for ten years. And after one year on our home in 2006 was our, our big storm event where we took in about eight feet of water, eight feet of water into our basement. Since then, we've had little water intrusion, the last was actually in 2011, and that was only three and a half feet. We deal in feet at our house. Since moving in, we went from what we were told was a dry property, to litigation with previous owners, to a complete basement waterproofing done twice, to a complete tear-down and rebuild of a foundation wall, and also to a change in our FEMA flood status, to now an AE zone where we have to have flood insurance. So again, we do appreciate the city's stormwater work that they've done downstream as it has helped us. Five properties, nine-one-nine-six, nine-one-eight-six, which is where we live, nine-one-seven-six, nine-one-six-two, and nine-one-five-two, North Bedford. We all have a creek that runs behind our house. All of our homes have this creek, we all share the same experiences. This creek brings water down from Ledge Road, from North Field, so we get water from up there, we get water runoff from two-seventy-one, from North and South Freeway Drives, and also on the other side of North Bedford Road. All of this water comes through our properties and until it finally passes under North Bedford Road to get to Indian Creek. We've seen an increase in stormwater running through our properties because of the development and improvements done to two-seventy-one and also North and South Freeway Drives. The erosion to our little creek is terrible, and frankly, it's just too much for an individual homeowner to handle as it does affect five properties. I'm asking the city for assistance in looking at our specific situation to come up with a comprehensive solution. For instance, can the city redefine our creek to help our erosion on all of our properties? Can this creek be laid with piping and enclosed? And has the city looked into a stormwater detention and/or retention at the land conservancy at the corner of North Bedford and Ledge Road? My husband, Tom, and I, we were original members of the DSCC Stormwater Committee here for the city of Macedonia. We did good work for the city, and we feel that this committee looked at stormwater for all of Macedonia. But tonight I'm here to respectfully ask for assistance with our specific problem at nine-one-eight-six North Bedford. Thank you very much for your time.
Kathy, it's amazing. I'm telling you that you are here because today I had a meeting with our engineering building inspector, and we were talking about stormwater and where we stand and where we've come since then, and I said, I wonder what happened to the lawyers, 'cause I haven't heard anything for a while. And lo and behold, here you are.
Here I am.
One of the good things, if there is such a thing to be said about the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, is that we fought.
Oh, yes, I remember.
We didn't want him here, right? Okay, because we were gonna pay money and it was gonna go to Quahog County. But we have over a hundred thousand dollars already that we have in escrow, because we're back in court, not us as an individual, but everybody with the NEORSD. So we were starting to contribute money, of which a quarter of percent, a quarter of it was going to come back to us. That money is in escrow right now. One of the things that NEORSD wanted to really emphasize in the city of Macedonia was Indian Creek.
And its tributaries. Please help us, and its tributaries.
Yeah, they, they really did want to dredge the creek, they wanted to do, right, Mike? Indian Creek was a priority with them, more so than all the other things that the Stormwater Committee came up with as priorities. To them, Indian Creek was number one, all right? So we're not done with the judgment yet. When the judgment's over with, and if they do come back, we have that money coming to us and we have somebody who says Indian Creek needs work. So those are both pluses for you. We have just barely scratched the surface of all the things that you have come up with as the Stormwater Committee, but let me tell you this. This year in our budget, we've done, we have the number one job, Guadalupe. It's in our budget. Finally.
Finally, yeah.
You know, after all these years, because we just didn't have the pump. Now we're getting to that point, so I wanted to tell you that, that even though NEORSD and all those people up there suck, all right, and we don't want them in our county, well, if they're here and they help us, in a way, that could be a good thing.
Well, again, I'm waiting for my check back from NEORSD, because I hope that they do lose that litigation. I would rather be more regionalized with us.
And we talked about that. Are we gonna get interest? They've had that money of ours for a long time.
Yes, they have. Yes.
They stopped collecting that fee and that. We're still, I don't know what the prospect is for this suit to move to the decision level, but perhaps you've got some insight, Joe?
It's at the highest level now, we're just waiting for the decision to occur. They're over a year and a half.
Everybody's had their statements put in and their depositions and all that, so.
What we did do is, I've talked to Jim after you and I had our email exchange, we've resurrected the entire documents that were, I mean, hours and hours, and I always applaud this committee. And I always applaud this committee because we were the first to hear the fee and I thought everybody was gonna fall off the floor and that was a very polite term we used because I don't think that was the word any of us used when they said, we're gonna collect a fee so we can fix Tinkers Creek, Parma, East Lake, remember they kept going on and on and where else they're going?
Yeah.
So, but we did resurrect the entire report because it's still viable. And so we're gonna, and that was part of the documentation that we were gonna present all of council for that Lake Forest meeting. It goes beyond Lake Forest, it goes to every entity including yours. Now, the Guadalupe pipe just throws water down towards Bedford Road, so you know, it was one that.
Well, the, the, the amazing thing is that um, I still remember your name and your problem and we I, I can't believe you're here tonight because what time was that, Jim? Like, we were talking about five o'clock, four?
You had a premonition, you had a premonition.
But the good news is that you're not forgotten.
Oh, yes, please. Great to hear that work wants to go on in Indian Creek, but it also needs to be looked at, all the water that has to get to Indian Creek. Cause we are the retention area for all the water from Northfield, two seventy-one, North Freeway Drive, we are the retention area.
What about the houses that you're talking about, are those uh north of Ledge or just south of?
Just south of.
Because north of Ledge, they flood too.
Yes, but it's all of our, I mean, just a couple days ago when we had all that rain, I mean, we were all under water.
There's a number of homes up, not just even north of you.
The only issue at Ledge and Bedford is that it's a conservancy and it was donated to the city as a conservancy, so we're talking about right at the corner.
Mm-hmm.
Were held by conservancy rules, which I don't believe allows a retention base, we'd have to investigate that.
Yeah, that I wasn't sure, but it was just an idea.
Fred Tufts was our engineer then and I remember him walking that property with uh representatives from um an engineering company and they were looking at it and said, I don't know how we could put a retention base in there. So it was looked at long ago, but we'll resurrect that once we get this cash flow starting to come in.
Please do, that's all I can ask.
Which is already started.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's good to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you again, thank you.
Alright, uh, that's the end of our public comments for this evening. Let's move right on with pending and or new legislation, starting with ordinance number one twenty-five two thousand fourteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one twenty-five two thousand and fourteen for its third reading by title only, please. Pardon me, two thousand fourteen, right?
Second reading.
Second reading, oh, that's right, you're right. I had that written on one paper and I forgot it.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance nine two three oh nine C two B two by creating an annual escrow fee for inspection and administration of long-term maintenance agreements regarding post-construction water quality practice.
Moving on to resolution number one, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number one, twenty fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
A resolution confirming the reappointment of Robin Boginsky to the Audit Committee.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post resolution number one, twenty fifteen, and according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Um, resolution number one passes, that's a good start to the new year, I guess. Um, Robin Boginsky is not here this evening. Uh, I hope he's alright because lately he did have some health issues, but he's very eager to continue serving on the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee only meets when the city gets audited. We have a committee made up of citizens that get to see at the same time the mayor and council get to see what our audit report is. I think it's a good way of keeping more transparency. Resolution.
Uh, Mayor, I just let me make a comment, I did see Robin on Tuesday rotary and he did have a major health problem, but it's been corrected.
Good. Good.
And he's doing fine, he's looking the best he's looked in about three years here.
Yes. Alright, moving on to resolution number two, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number two, two thousand fifteen, for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
A resolution declaring it necessary to renew an, an existing five uh point zero seven mil tax levy for the purpose of current expenses pursuant, pursuant to the Ohio Refi Code Sections fifty-seven oh five nineteen eight and fifty-seven oh five one nine one, requesting the Summit County Fiscal Officer to certify the total current tax valuation of the city and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that levy and declaring an emergency.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward, I'd like to just make a comment. Everybody always probably has a knee-jerk reaction to the word tax and levy. Uh, and I do too. This is a renewal, it is not an increase of the current level of taxes which citizens are paying. It, the, the current amount that the city receives is seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, two hundred and twenty-three dol- or two hundred and twenty-three dollars uh annually and the process is that we're asking that the auditor to go out and determine exactly the, the exact amount. And this is the first of a process, it is not an action to increase your taxes. It is an action to maintain the, the current level of taxation. So with that in mind, I would make a motion that we move and pass resolution number two, two thousand and fifteen, and post according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And both? Um, you read it, Josephine, and I kinda got off track, there's sorry about that. Uh, one other thing um is that this tax has not been increased since nineteen seventy-five. So there's not too many places in the world where you can live and still pay the same tax rate you did to your city as you did in nineteen seventy-five. Alright, uh, what's your pleasure, David?
I move that we.
You did, sir, we're, you already did that, so we need, we needed roll.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay, resolution two passes. Ordinance number three dash two thousand fifteen.
Ordinance number three, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number three, twenty fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
I, I have a question before we adopt this ordinance. Um, we double-checked some numbers here and I think before we, we move forward, we really need to make sure this is accurate. It's saying in here that we wanna change the prosecutor, it should not say fifty-three one eighty-five, but fifty-one one twenty for their salary. Looked at the pay ordinance that was adopted at the end of two thousand thirteen, that would have been for two thousand and fourteen.
That's what it was for.
Originally, the prosecutor was to have a raise to take their salary to fifty-two thousand one hundred forty-two and change.
Correct.
That was amended to fifty-one one twenty dot fifty-four.
Correct.
If you adopt this as is, we are saying that two years in a row, this prosecutor would not get any increase in wage.
That's correct, that is what it says.
The, the law department didn't get an increase.
This is the prosecutor.
Well, I understand, but it's still a contract position.
But you have given raises to everyone else, what would be the reason not to give the prosecutor a raise? Is there some issue with performance or?
No. No, this person is a contract employee.
Pardon me?
She's a contract employee and.
I, I get that, that doesn't answer the question.
And we could, we could do that if you would like to amend, but uh.
Do we give a co- a raise to uh GPD?
Pardon me?
No, we did not.
I don't think we gave, they got a raise necessarily every year.
Okay, but it's certainly up to you.
What?
I said if you're proposing an amendment.
Yeah, I would propose to amend that the second whereas, um, we change the schedule of compensation section four to fifty-two one forty-two. I believe it's dot ninety-five, which would be two percent.
That's correct.
That is true, right. That's my motion to amend.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh, wait, do I also have to, also, I believe that has to also amend section one?
No, the section one has to be amended to the correct number four that came out of that ordinance?
Well, it's in the whereas and it's also in the section one, so would have to be amended to be the fifty-two one forty-two in both places.
Okay.
So my amendment, I amend my amendment to say it's not only included in the whereas, but also in section one.
Okay.
All in favor? We have a mo- we have a motion and a second.
I have a question.
There's a question.
Because I mean, we, I would have asked this in the work session, but I was under the impression that this was a clerical error in the ordinance that Patty from Human Resource caught and that we were just amending that and I asked you about that.
Yes, we are here.
To make sure.
This fifty-two one forty-two was sitting in the twenty thirteen.
Did we vote for three rounds already?
And it, it should have read twenty-one, fifty-one.
The clerical error, she was not paid fifty-three.
And so now she's increasing it now to fifty-two.
She's, she's asking to amend it to increase.
Okay, I just, I, I just knew that, I thought this was just a clerical error.
Well, we were told it was a clerical error, but it's more than a clerical error.
Okay.
It's also taking her all the way back to two thousand and thirteen. My amendment is to give her a two percent raise, which would truly equal for two years, she's only getting one percent. If we had given it to her, she never got the raise that was indicated in the paperwork that was in there.
Correct.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
So it's one.
Aye.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Okay, now moving forward with ordinance number three.
As amended.
As amended, um, Josephine, did you read that?
Um, an ordinance amending ordinance one seventeen twenty fourteen, employee pay range, schedule of compensation adopted December eleventh, twenty fifteen. Now we just need to go for adoption of the amended ordinance.
Go on, sir.
Oh, um, what's your pleasure?
Okay, I guess we can go back to the, alright. Uh, I move that we pass and post ordinance number three, twenty fifteen, and, and, uh, and post according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next is ordinance number four, two thousand fifteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number four, two thousand fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-eight nineteen ninety-seven and one seventeen twenty fourteen by creating and adding the new position of part-time custodian of public buildings facilities maintenance.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance four, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number five, two thousand fifteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance five, two thousand fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
An ordinance putting Mark Robinson to position of part-time custodian of public buildings facilities maintenance.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance five, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance passes, moving on to ordinance number six, two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number six, two thousand fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by um title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
An emergency ordinance amending the collective bargain agreement with Timsters Local four thirty-six regarding nighttime premium.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number six, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
First, I'd like to thank all the, the service department guys that'll be driving truck at night, it's an awfully difficult job to be doing that for long periods of time and wanna say that we do appreciate what they've done and what they're doing in the future and this should help to improve our efficiency, so, yes.
And Ms. Tully?
I would agree, also the fact that it's saving money. But as someone who used to get up and, well, okay, I said I'd make him breakfast before he'd go plow because he did a part-time job plowing. Then I never did it after the first time. I do say thank you to him, I don't know how they do it in the middle of the night, yes.
Alright, that concludes our scheduled legislation, are there any motions or other legislative actions this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize uh the engineering department along with Mr. Ladd to perform the actual test of material from Lake Forest Estates with the creek not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Is there any other motions or legislative actions? If not, correspondence from the clerk, Josephine?
I have several, do you wanna wait till next week? Three hours?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have it, we'll do it next time.
Thank you.
I'm sure it's gripping, then let's wait.
Uh, mayor's report, uh, cut that down because there are some things in here I have to mention. Um, I'd like to remind everyone with winter weather comes snow parking bans. The bans are put in effect to allow us to remove the snow from the street in efficient manner. They are posted on our website, on our cable TV channel, and on Nixle. This once again reinforces the need for you to have the Macedonia app if you have a smartphone. And if you text, you really need to get Nixle to forewarn you. Both can save you time, aggravation. If you are unsure of how to get to either of these free services, just contact my office and we'll walk you through it or you can sign up on the city's website. One more thing relating to snow. Please do not blow snow from your property into the street. And if your street, if your driveway is plowed, your plowed snow from your driveway cannot go across the street. It has to be put by law next to your driveway. So if somebody's taking your snow, uh, you have your yard plowed and they've taken the snow and pushing it across the street, that's a no-no. Um, don't forget, if you're a senior, you're eligible for our senior programs. Um, they're getting very, very uh popular, there's a lot of people coming. You can contact Sherri at three three oh four six eight four three two. Four six eight eight four three two, if you'd like to be involved. Court receipts for December two thousand fourteen were thirty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-five thousand. I hope you all have a safe and happy two thousand fifteen, moving on to committee reports.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, the planning uh committee meeting, um. Yes, Mr. Mayor, the planning committee meeting, well, the meeting was adjourned early, so I didn't get to announce it, but December 15th, we had, we had a request for a conditional use permit for a nursing home and a proposal for preliminary site plan approval at 9730 Valley View Road. We also had a proposed signage for a mattress firm at Northeast Corner of Route 8 in Aurora Road. We had a proposed two-wall signs for the first watch at Macedonia Marketplace, Aurora Road. We had a proposed signage change for the Country Inn in Suits at 7820 Capitol Boulevard. A proposed signage for Jimmy John's at 463 East Aurora Road. A request for similar use determination for a hotel in a B1 district at 20 Girl Scout Way, which was mentioned tonight. And a proposed exterior awning recovers for Charming Charlie's at 8210 Macedonia Commons Boulevard. A proposed new wall mount sign for Capital Tire at 9600 Valley View Road. And then also, this week's planning commission meeting, which would have been January 12th, Kayla sent out a message that it has been canceled. And the reason for the cancellation is that the January planning meeting was canceled for the conditional use permit for the hotel. They will be holding off on their submittal at this time. And Antonio's Pizza signage, which would have been on the January 12th, 5:30 meeting here for what is going to be rescheduled for the February planning meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I think I got on it, didn't I?
Is there any other committee report?
Preppity.
Hearing none, let's move on, Jim, to departmental reports.
Thanks, Mayor, and Council, I want to thank you very much for the night shift increase for those men, they do deserve it. It's, we did that plowing at night for over 20, 20-plus years, and it's not fun. So, just so everyone knows, that schedule will be 7:00 at night till 5:30 in the morning. So we have a pretty good coverage all during the week. Also, the leaf pickup was completed on Christmas Eve. We made that trip more than four times, so everybody had a chance to get their leaves. If they didn't, bag them, because our equipment's put away.
Well, that's true.
And also that the gutter cleaning for the seniors will be done as soon as weather permits. We didn't have them all at the time, so now we did. At the time, there was only 75, we're up to 93 again. So, once the weather permits, he'll clean all the gutters that we agreed to. And other than that, that's my report, Mayor.
Jim, I have a question about the, yesterday's snow plowing in the morning, there was quite a bit of really big problems with the snow plowing on the initial storm, what happened to it?
No, the men weren't called out.
I'm sorry?
We didn't get called out.
You did not get, by whom?
My men actually came in at their regular time, nobody called them out.
I know, was there a plan to call them, or what happened?
No, they're usually called out when-
Who calls them, I said, the mayor does, I don't think.
Police at night call them out, because we're not here at this time. That's why I feel the night shift schedule will really make a difference, because they'll be here. You know, we won't have to wait for phone calls. That could be just, sometimes what happens is there might be a shift change, and if there's a shift change, no one's out, they're in the middle process of-
I just know a number of residents were kind of upset that they were slip-sliding away here.
Yeah, but it was taken care of quite quickly, if I remember correct.
Well, after 7:00, right, most people are.
Right.
So you're saying that normally you get called by the police to let you know?
Yes, the police are here and they would give us the call and heads up.
Because they know that the road conditions are bad?
Right, they're here, and they call us, and then we make the call up to the men.
John, do you have a?
That's Vince.
Vince, I'm sorry.
I will look into that, I, I'm not sure Sergeant Glance would have been working. Typically, as Jim can attest, he's the first one to call when the first snowflake hits the ground, so I don't know if they were tied up with something major, or somehow it got lost in communication, but I will check into it.
Does the superintendent call the police to find out what the road conditions are? I'd really like to know that answer, because it was pretty bad the other morning. I was out there in there at 6: something in the morning with the kids, and it was pretty bad.
It was bad.
And I couldn't understand why there was school, actually, but, you know, but like you said, Jim said, it got cleared up right away, like within a couple hours, but traffic was just-
A night-
Bad, everywhere on 82 North Bedford's, it was just backed up everywhere. That I literally had to call the school and say, hey, I'm going to be late, I'm not going to have these kids at school on time. I literally wasn't, but the school actually did a delay. Do security, I guess, security comes in and delays, so none of the kids are in trouble, because there were so many of us, so. Does the superintendent call you guys?
We've had night shift, they had talked through a bunch of different agencies to determine sometimes if it's best to call school, but that's a decision they make on their own, they make an input from us from time to time, yes.
I was just wondering.
Okay, moving on, Mike.
Thanks, Mayor. We're just busy working on final reports, year-end reports for 2014. I should have those ready by the next council meeting, that's it.
Very good, Angela.
Thank you, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, since we haven't seen each other. Lots of plans in the works for 2015 that we're currently busy with. The biggest one, of course, is the Spirit of Macedonia Festival, so we have begun to lay the groundwork for that. The dates this year will be June 4th through the 7th, so it will remain the first weekend in June. I will have ride contracts and fireworks contracts forthcoming, hopefully at the next meeting. Those are in process as we speak, so hopefully I'll have those for you. We're also planning our first city-organized 5K this spring, so that's going to be something new that the city will be hosting, and we hope to have a lot of community involvement with that, we're very excited about that. So a lot of details to follow. Lastly, we do have a full-time vacancy among our administrative staff at the Recreation Center, so we will be posting and advertising and accepting resumes for our membership and marketing coordinator. And I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Mayor, just a quick update on the 271, the new bridge structure work that's going to require closures on North and South Freeway. Just received an updated schedule from ODOT today. South Freeway Drive, they're planning to have closed at Ledge Road starting on Monday, January 19th through February 2nd. And the closure of North Freeway Drive at Ledge Road has been pushed back to February 2nd through Monday, February 16th. So the routes will be posted, they've been posted and they've had them covered, they've had some delays and some snags in the scheduling, and what I just mentioned to you is the latest.
Are we posting those on the website?
Usually, Sylvia, we put out, then show the reports and post about them on the website.
Right, right, when this information comes in-
It's on NICSOL.
Well, they, yes, NICSOL's the best, because, for instance, City, Clinton City Water was going to close the road, and they put up signs they're going to close the road, and then they didn't.
Well, I know.
So, you know, it's, it's very, very hard to work and-
That is, the Water Department issue is one of the reasons for this getting pushed back. Some of the drilling rigs that the contractor needs for the foundations is another reason. And you're right, Mayor, when this information comes in, Chief Golden's copied on this, we have periodic meetings with ODOT, and this information comes in, and the quickest way for this to reach the residents and the public is through NICSOL, but we do try and put it in the messenger reports and get it on the website as well.
Nick, I have a question, well, I have a statement, actually. The other night, you know, when they closed Freeway Drive there, you know, to work on the bridge above, they had the proper signs down by, you know, right there by Freeway Drive and Ledge Road, but when you pulled out of Speedway, you had no idea, there was a whole bunch of us going down Speedway, down Freeway Drive, when we came out of Speedway and was going, you know, to cut through to go to Ledge, and then we all got down to the last business, and we all had to turn around, because there was no signs up by Speedway telling us that the road was closed.
Yeah, they should have, they should have the advanced warning signs.
They did not have that, because-
We'll drive the zone.
When I came back, I did double-check and stuff, and those signs were up there telling anybody that that was happening, and, I mean, it was just, you had to turn around and come back. So, but the, everything was properly marked going on Ledge to the Freeway that way, but not off of 82.
Right, we'll check the zone.
It was a mess, a couple, like a week ago.
We can check the zone per their plan, and we'll ride it and make sure they have their signs up per their approved plan.
You know, Nick, that's true not only for what Reed is saying, but when we were closing Ledge Road Bridge, there were signs at the bridge. But over there on Route 8, people were turning out the Ledge Road, and they came all the way down and had to go back. So it was brought to my attention, too, that maybe from now on, Jim, when we're involved, we need to put something at, all the way on Route 8 that the bridge is closed, and also on North Bedford that the bridge is closed, so people, usually from North Bedford, they can see it, but Route 8, you can't, so you go all the way. So that might be something we want to start looking for.
And along those lines, Mayor, as we discussed the other day, we do, Engineering Department did receive a Christmas present from Norfolk Southern on Christmas morning, and that was the roadway maintenance and traffic plan that we had discussed. We do have a preliminary roadway maintenance and traffic plan for the work that's going to be done this year, retrofitting that structure, and it does have a pretty detailed detour plan on there that we ought to be able to implement ourselves.
So this is the beginning of fixing the bridge?
Correct.
Good. All right. All right. Vince?
I have no report, Mayor.
Joe?
No report, Mayor.
All right, moving on to unfinished business?
I just made one other addition when you talked about snow plowing, and I'm surprised you didn't bring it up. Of course, Fireman's not here, please don't plow, all your snow in front will fire your hydrants, they still need to be operable.
Good idea. Any unfinished business, new business?
Most adjourned.
Most adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.